The recording?
It's recording.
You assume so?
Yep.
No, it isn't.
Just hit it.
So, we're ready. Are we ready to go with the budget?
Sure.
Okay, couple of things before we get started. I just, I want to give you an update on the FY 20 budget. We were taught, now that school is closed for the rest of the year, we've had, we have a couple little concerns moving forward. This is for this budget this year. As far as like our Excel program, right now, we're about $30,000 in the hole at this point. Irene, I'm gonna let you take that, take the rest of this.
Okay.
I'll let you take it. I'm gonna let you deliver the bad news.
Bad news, good news. The bad news is that because we have zero revenue coming in, but we were still paying everybody, we now have a deficit in that account because even with some sort of a cushion, we've gone through it. The good news is that we have done, quote, "the right thing" in keeping those people on the payroll until we knew for sure what was happening. So that way, if in fact, we had opened school again on Monday, May 4th, we would have been ready to jump right back in and offer the program as it had been when we left it on March 12th. But now, we have to make a decision about what we're going to do.
There's no head.
I was just gonna say that. That was cute. So, the question is, you know, do we now either furlough, which means we intend to call back, or simply, you know, reduce the force on the Excel labor pool? Charlie has put in place the closure through June 29th. I'm not sure when Excel normally started offering their summer programs, if it was June or July.
July, after, um, after.
Okay. So, the question would be, is Lois expecting to run these programs, you know, starting in July? And if she is, how many people would be taking advantage of them?
Can I ask, is this, so, my understanding of Excel is that it really is an independent entity. They run their money through the schools, but we have no sort of control.
Insurance? Do they not get our insurance?
They do. They're, they're most, it's weird. They're mostly through the town, even though they service the school and give them service.
So, I guess, who's paying their, we're paying them now even though they're a separate entity. I guess that's my question.
Yeah, I just, in terms of decision-making and who has, you know, like, I just, I know that that's always been, not an issue, but we always mention that when we talk about Excel.
Yeah, kind of an open question.
Well, I did talk to, I did talk to Lois, and she's on board to do it. We just don't know, like, what the next steps are, or who's responsible, I guess is the question. Is it her?
Shortfall. Who's gonna pay the $30,000 shortfall? Is that on us, or is that on her?
And where, you know, how, who, I guess, what is Excel?
Well, it is, it's a revolving fund. And Lois has pointed out several times that last year or the year before, the town or the school, you know, basically the same thing, took $70,000 from her revolving fund to use to do something with.
I believe we paid for health insurance with it.
I don't know what we did with it, but they took it from her, you know, I say "her", took it from the Excel revolving fund and did something else with it. So, you know, her argument would be, if there's a shortfall now, if I had had my $70,000, there wouldn't be a shortfall.
But I think that was to keep her solvent, to keep it solvent in regards to insurance, is my recollection. I can go back and look at that.
Yeah, that, no.
It's not, I don't, would think we took $70,000 to hire another teacher.
I have no idea, because I wasn't here.
So, I guess my question is, Excel is its own separate entity. Lois is the director of Excel, and they just use our, they like, they rent our building. I guess, that's what I'm trying to.
They use, I don't believe they pay rent.
Pay anything, no.
So, how are we getting, how are they paying, how are they getting insurance through us, I guess is my question. I don't, I don't know how to furlough them. I don't even know who, who's the onus on this. Is that?
They are town employees.
Yeah, I don't know that either.
They are town employees.
Is that up to the Board of Selectmen?
That's the question, Lydia. I don't know who they belong to.
Jeannie might have better understanding of it.
Because clearly, I'm not gonna operate, I can't operate the school budget on an outsider. It doesn't make sense to me. We're, I don't, that $30,000 is coming out of our budget right now, and they're not even our program.
Do you want me to ask the Board of Selectmen tonight at their meeting?
No.
Okay.
Wait until we know.
Oh, okay.
Just because, just because then it'll be a thing, and, and let's, let's get some additional information.
Okay. I'm just letting you know, that's something I'm looking forward to, to moving forward with. I'm talking to Lois about it tomorrow morning. I told her I have a meeting with her tomorrow, so we were gonna work that out, but moving forward, I guess, furloughing them would be, has to happen. I don't know how that works. So, you know, I'm gonna.
Jeannie definitely has a lot of information on who does what on, for Excel, town or us.
Okay, so I'll, I'll give Jeannie a call tomorrow on that, because that's, that is an issue. I didn't know if there's anybody else, like, for example, custodians. I mean, I don't know what you want to do with them. You want me to pay them?
Now, this, the, the question with the custodians is, what I've seen a couple of districts do is, they have furloughed all but the lead custodians. The lead custodians are not furloughed. They're still being paid and are on-call, and can be called in at any time to do building checks or whatever. If we were to do that in, in Maynard, from our budget, it would look like we were, you know, quote, "savings", 6,500 per week to furlough just those non-lead custodians. However, the town is then going to be paying the unemployment, because these people are eligible for unemployment. If you furlough them, they remain eligible for benefits. So, the town would still be paying their portion of health insurance if they had it, but the employees would have to still pay their portion. So, they would have to be cutting a check to the town every month for their portion of health insurance. The net savings to the town would be 75% of the 6,500. I think I figured that out. I forgot what it was. But I've got that somewhere. Now, the thing we have to keep in mind with doing that is, there is potentially, I'm gonna get more information on this. There is potentially federal money, relief money through the CARES Act, coming to the school districts through the state. Now, the state cannot keep it. The state is supposed to allocate it. And they're supposed to allocate it based on your, oh gosh, chapters, I wanna say chapter 71, but that's, no, title one, your title-one allocations. So, Maynard's title-one allocation is 170,000. It looks like we would get an amount, roughly 80% of that are $119,000. But, that may be predicated on not laying anybody off or furloughing. So, the net difference is furloughing the custodians for the rest of this year, and the 119,000, the difference of not furloughing them and accepting the 119. I just have to make sure, before we make that final decision, that we are in fact going to get $119,000.
And I'm not too sure that I want to furlough the custodians anyway, because now that they have these buildings, I think conceivably, they could start going in and doing some work in them as long as they stay away from each other.
You know, apart from each other.
Pardon?
Six feet apart from each other.
You know, I just threw some ideas out to, to, as far as the revenue for the rest of the year. Other than Excel, Irene seems to think that we are gonna be okay, correct?
The only thing that we have to worry about is, well, potentially, the facilities revolving account. But, right now, if the information that I pulled from iVigions is correct, we have almost exactly enough money in that fund to cover everything we have currently spent and encumbered against that fund. So, even though we have no more revenue coming in for this year, I believe that that fund will end up at about even, you know, zero, zero balance.
And what are we spending that money on? What is the?
I take it back. Or am I confusing that with the athletic activity fee? Hold on. I'll tell you that in a second.
Mary, facility revolving account is, we pull for maintenance and stuff like that. That's a lot of where the maintenance money comes from.
Yeah. Okay. I'm gonna take it back. I think that one might be in the hole. It's student activities, athletics, that's, that's gonna run for a wash. Let me just check. I have my fund balances here somewhere.
So, Mary Jane, while, while Irene's looking for that, what were the projects that you were thinking for the custodians? How could we put them to work? Because we don't have a lot of extra money for projects.
On that note, I'm just thinking they can get in, start doing some cleaning and, and getting ready for what they would do, waxing the floors, whatever you would do during the summer, I'm thinking. You know, let's get started on that stuff earlier than later. There shouldn't be a time problem getting that stuff done. So, let's get the schools ready for the fall. Why not get going, especially since we can't have everybody be on top of each other, you know, I think having them be six feet apart, and it's gonna take them a little bit longer to get that done. And if indeed, we do have some sort of staggered summer program, which, that's some things that are being discussed right now, we might have to literally go around people to clean the buildings. So, I think, starting some of that work earlier would be something we can do. My only issue is, I'm not sure if we have the supplies, like the waxing and things like that, to start that. I'm just trying to talk to you guys about what do you, you know, what do you see as far as, you know, we're not going in the hole with revenue with anybody other than Excel at this point.
Okay, and facilities rental, but that's only gonna be, it looks like, about 5,000 or less.
That's not too bad. We can, we can handle.
Amazingly enough.
So, I guess that's, you know, those are what I'm thinking. I mean, I'm really not apt to furlough the custodians, but I do think we need to, to furlough the Excel program. So, I didn't know what your thoughts were, as being the budget subcommittee. And Jennifer, you can chime in, and, you know, I don't know what you think.
I mean, it's hard, right? You know, but I, I think, at the bottom, at the end of the day, you know, we have an obligation to come in as solvent as we can. You know, I was just texting with some other people about some of the, some of these issues, and there's one thought that some of our Excel staff in particular may do better off on unemployment than what we're able to pay them, even if we keep them on. You know, particularly with the increased benefit.
Can I interrupt one question? I'm letting Denise hatch in. I'm just letting you know, I'm letting a non-administrator in.
Okay.
And that won't jeopardize our CARES money, because they are not part of school staff. Okay, so, because, because they're not employed directly by the school, they do not count, and they, and they're paid through a revolving fund. That will not count against us.
Okay, and I'm hearing you actually, I think you told me today, people that are furloughed look at additional $600?
Yes.
Who told me that? Jennifer? Somebody told me that, yeah?
Yeah. That is correct.
Okay.
They're getting, right now, through July 31, we're getting an extra 600 per week on unemployment. I don't know what rules govern that, but a lot of people are getting extra money every week. And I think the idea behind that was the recognition that if they're not furloughed, if they're actually laid off, they have to buy health insurance. Furlough employees, and even furloughed employees still have to pay their portion of health insurance.
Okay.
So, I believe that was the rationale behind giving that extra money to people.
Gotcha. Okay, so I'll have a conversation with, with Lois in the morning, and maybe Irene, I can put you on that with me, and we can decide. Maybe I can even grab Jeannie to get her help, help us, how that works.
And that money is paid for by the federal government, that extra 600.
Okay.
Just for, to check with me on timing for tomorrow, Mary Jane, because I have a call on out-of-district tuition.
Okay. Yeah.
That's obviously a huge, very important call.
Okay, so that's that. So, just going through my stuff. Now, as far as the budget, ladies, I've been talking to the town. Can I, I gotta turn my light on. It's too dark in here. Hang on one second.
Irene, is that 119, 119,000, is that part of the CARES Act that you're saying we'll get? Okay.
Sorry, I just was, I couldn't see in the dark anymore.
And right now, we're.
I have to take a look at that. I, I'm not guaranteeing you that we're going to get that, but everyone seems to believe that's what's going to happen.
And right now, we're talking about furloughing to the end of June, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It would just be the Excel program.
Right, right, exactly. And then we'll have to have a conversation if it doesn't. Now, what happens if the summer, well, I guess, yeah, the summer program doesn't happen, then would we still be responsible for furloughing them until September? I guess at some point, I'm looking at their independence.
Well, that's, that's my concern, Mary.
Right. And, like, how much responsibility do we take of, you know, I mean, I saw Lois yesterday, and she says the first time in 25 years that she's ever run in the red. So, it's been self-sustaining. So, for us, all of a sudden, to take that on, it's, it's, you know, it's a new precedent.
Right.
So.
Right, and that, and that becomes the question. You know, we have to wait and see in the next couple of days what the, what the commissioner says. I mean, he mentioned something earlier today about, you know, perhaps opening summer schools on some sort of staggered schedule and that type of thing. But again, that's also, we talked about College Gate, that's a huge revenue income for us as well. So, you know, how does that look? And second of all, you know, who's gonna want to send their kids to these programs whenever he's on top of each other?
Or if they're not working.
You know, that's another expense. I mean, we're moving forward the budget as is, with the expectation we're gonna have College Gate there. So, I mean, we may have to revisit this later on, but right now, you know, it's in there. We'll see what happens, but, but that's how that, how that's working. And I agree with you. I have to find out more how this, I'm not really sure. It seems a little convoluted, the, the Excel, if they're not employees, but they're still collecting insurance. It just seems very.
According to Michelle, it's all run through the town, so probably bringing Mike Guzzo in on that conversation, because they are technically town employees, and if there is a deficit in her estimation, it would be from, it would be taken care of at the town level from pre-cash. But I think pulling him in on that conversation, that way, it's just, it's clear sort of who's doing what, you know?
Well, that makes me feel better. I feel better about that. I'm sure Irene does too, because she's worried about that as well. So, that's, that's actually a good, good, thank you. Thank you for letting me know on that. Okay. So, that being said, we look like we're in pretty good shape for '20 right now. I've been talking to the town manager, I mean, the town, Mike Guzzo, and he said we should be fine on moving forward with our budget. I just took a look at the budget again, and talking about, we will have a couple of layoffs. So, we have right now, one special ed teacher.
We, it just, if I could ask people, these have not been discussed with individuals, so if folks could.
Move to the audience, just, okay, we're okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So, that's why I'm saying we can, and I'm not gonna really, and we don't know, these people aren't gonna be, I'm not telling you, you know, who they are at this point, because I'm meeting with Mike Walden tomorrow at 11 o'clock to talk about how to move forward to notify these teachers. Some are going to be, as a result of professional status, I mean, not renewals, and others are just because we need to reallocate the funding somewhere else. So, right now, we have a special ed teacher, one Green Meadow teacher. We are gonna lay off one custodian. I did verify that with Justin. We wanted to lay three off, and I think Justin had a stroke. He said, "That's 25% of my staff", you know. He really was very adamant. He said, "I can definitely, that one go. Two would be a stretch. Three, three would be very hard, especially with Fowler", trying to run all the programs it runs after school and, and the activities it has. So, we can move forward with one custodian on that, and then we have six pair professionals we're, we're looking to, to, to let go right now.
So, going back to the custodians, I know when we were talking about laying off, I thought we were just gonna lay off one anyway, and then we were gonna have, have, so it was, it was gonna be like a one-person splitting between two schools. Is that what we're still talking about?
Yeah, we were, but then we had a meeting last week. We thought we could lay three off of.
Right.
Well, Irene, in terms of that, the analysis was that if we had, we have 12 currently, and if we, if we shifted three, we could go to split shifts in each building. Which, again, this is, this is not the first time this has been discussed. You know, Brian, Mary Jane, Irene, and myself, and I think Charles too, you know, we're all trying to look to find ways of having that second administrator at Green Meadow, because the, the data supports it in terms of the Student Opportunity Act, in, with what they're, the community and the teachers say that they're looking for. So, it, I think that it's, I think that it's important in terms of this analysis, it wasn't just, we're looking at cutting three custodians. It was, you know, how do, how can we do what we think in our community thinks we need to do, moving forward? And unfortunately, it does not appear as though that that is a viable option.
So, okay, so we were planning on potentially three, so that means we have to find money someplace else, correct?
Not necessarily. So, we also have six retirements.
Okay.
So, we're hoping we can save some money with the new hires with the retirements.
So, Michelle built that into the budgets, you know, so we, we have to, if we're hiring at a lower step, you know, much lower than what we traditionally do, I think. Irene, do you know she built in 66,000?
I don't.
Per new teacher.
That's what she said, 66. I mean, we, because I know, when I'm looking at the budget right now, we have, the kindergarten teacher was at Max. Because she's retiring. One of the PE teachers is retiring, but we are not filling that position. We are taking the wellness teacher from Green Meadow out and moving that, one of the other PE instructors to have, moving to the buildings. So, that position will not be filled.
So, she did, she did accept that?
We are having the meetings. We've had to talk with the MEA to make sure that we are following all pieces. So, we're still continuing to have these, these conversations.
Yeah, these are, these are what we're doing. Again, we have to have the meetings with the MEA and them, and they're by May 1st, so these, these are what is anticipated.
Oh, I thought you had a meeting scheduled with Mike to talk with him about this last week.
I, no, today, tomorrow at 11 o'clock.
Okay.
Tomorrow at 11 o'clock. We did talk to the principals about, you know, having conversations about people moving around. For example, the Spanish flesh teacher is leaving. So, I know Donna's having conversations with, with those types of positions. So, those positions have, have been, having started some conversations, the people actually being reallocated have been somewhat, but the other people have not. So, those are the ones we have to meet with the union on.
So, so why do we have to meet with the union when we're just doing what's best for the kids and that?
Part of their contract.
Contract language.
Their contract. There's no negotiation. They just entitled to have somebody with them, Mary.
They are, right. Okay, all right. So, it's more of a conversation than it is getting their input or doing.
Right.
The other component, the other component of this is that we do need to have language around ed eval. And so, we do have to work that out with the association. They have a bargaining right over that, so.
So, that's really what it's about. Really, they have a right, I guess, I've never seen that before. They have a union rep with them when they get let go, I guess. I'm not really sure how that works.
Yeah. Yeah, we're much better off legally, you're much better off.
Yeah. So, that's how that would work.
So, that's just with the laying off. It's not with the reallocation of the teachers, okay?
There's, there's transfer language also in the contract, and we want to make sure we're following that.
Generally, anytime we're meeting with a teacher where there's a request that's being made, that is not coming from the teacher, we generally make sure that the union representatives are there, because we want to make sure we're protecting the rights of our staff, and that there's no, you know, perception of coercion or, or anything like that. So, it, I, I think it really is a best practice, so that we can work together to moving the district forward. You know, so, and it's just, you know, as with everything else, it's taking a little bit of time to get these meetings set up, because we are, you know, having a bunch of other meetings and conversations. You know, part of it, for the ed eval language, we were waiting, you know, our current MOU says that we're waiting on guidance from the state. We received that guidance this morning that said essentially, it's a local issue. So, we will be talking with, that's the conversation Mary Jane will be having with Mike to say, okay, you know, we need to now craft some language around that, and it's important, because for our non-professional status teachers, we do have an obligation to provide, to go through the ed eval process, and this is obviously an unforeseen set of circumstances, where at a minimum, we're not going to be able to provide in the same way we would have before, summative ratings and things of that nature. So, we want to make sure that what we're doing is fair to, to all people.
We have anybody that would normally have gone from non-professional to just professional status next in the fall?
I am sure that we do.
We do, yeah.
You know, this is, we've, we've erred on the side of caution when it comes to any sort of decisions or conversations around performance, just given that the last month and a half has been what it has been. I have continued to have conversations with our CIA principals in particular about any staff members that they're concerned about. And, you know, from the beginning of the year, you know, the, the message I give them is that there should be no surprises, so, you know, but, but again, we're, we're being thoughtful and understanding, particularly in the last month or so, of how crazy things are being. And, and I think, as I'm rambling on, I don't even think there was anyone of concern in year three.
One of the things that we've been really careful about is not getting teachers who are dealt with, not getting them into their third year. Then that way, we don't have a problem.
Exactly.
It, it comes very, very touchy. Get a teacher into the third year, and then you say, no, no, thank you. It's much better to make that decision. If not the first, it's definitely about the second year. And so, everybody who would be going, Mary, it's okay. And even going on professional status, it's okay.
Lydia, I think you asked me about that other, the principal, the 10-month positions have been talked to. Those, those people are well aware of those. That has been taken. I did take care of that last week.
Okay.
I think you were asking me about that last week.
For the same reason that you try not to get into the third year is another reason, because this would be the third year.
I mean, the administrators, it's different. It's contract. The administrators are on a contract, and it's a one-year contract.
And it turns out that.
I have his contract in front of me, and I read it, and it says that you can lay someone off or let them go for any reason prior to their third full year.
Right, but, but the contract expires on a certain date. So that, so in other words, you're not necessarily non-renewal, you're just not, you're, you're just not issuing them a new contract. That's done all the time with, with principals. So, you know, there can be a principal that's been there for 10 years, and you decide not at the end of a cycle to, to give a new contract.
Right, because you have to have more of a justifiable reason after that.
No.
So, for principals, no?
No, been there, done that.
Assistant principals, it turns out, we do. So, interestingly, tenure does apply to vice principal or assistant principal position, so the two-principal model has some benefits.
It does have some benefits in that respect, yes.
It does. That's good to know.
We found that out from Mike Long, the MASs attorney, last week.
Okay.
So, I, I have a copy of, I just lost it. When I looked at the, the district recommendations, last year, we recommended a budget of, this year, we're looking for a budget of 20,442,760. So, that was an increase of $865,000, okay, which is up 4.4%. Then the town asks us to reduce another 150,000. So, that reduced our budget even lower. The town says it's 3.66. I, I mean, says it's 4.1. I'm getting 3.66.
That's what I got.
So, I think, I texted Michelle that language too, it's just to verify, and she said, "Yes, it's 3.66". My guess is what they're doing is that they're playing games with that money. They asked us to reduce mid-year, or over the summer, but mid-year. And so, I think we just, you know, politically, if we want to land on 3.66, we land on 3.66, because it's from one year to, you know, it's, it's from budget cycle to budget cycle. It's not mid-year rift, you know what I mean? So, I think that's where the discrepancy is.
So, we've gone down, you know, from the, from the original 4.4 down to a 3.66 increase. So, I don't think that the town is going to really, hopefully, give you a hard time on that, because, I mean, we, I mean, we are at bare bones now.
Yeah.
Bare bones.
This is keeping the lights on.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was just the way that it was presented then, because 150,000 was the conversations that we've, that I've got here. So, it's not asking us to do anything more than what we've already allocated, okay?
But my concern, Mary, is they asked us to reduce by 150,000. We already were at 4.4, which was, you know, pretty low for us anyway. So, once we went down to cut the, the, the additional 150, we're now at 3.6, and they're saying it were 4.1. So, and I guess, you know, I just, it's Apple.
I think it's, I think it's a matter of, you know, what Greg needs, what words Greg needs to use politically, the Board of Selectmen, et cetera. My hope is that we are in a much more collaborative relationship right now. I, you know, the fact that the town has come back and said, "You don't need to look at reducing further for FY 21", I think is a good message, you know, it's a good sign that they're working with us.
Yeah.
I would anticipate, and I have said this to the CIA, to everyone, I would anticipate an FY I would anticipate in FY twenty-two or twenty-three that we will likely see some significant cuts. And I think people need to be prepared for that. Um, and I told my principals today, um, the CIA principals, we, we need to start planning for that now and coming up with schedules and coming up with programs so that it's not a knee-jerk reaction. Um, it's just, that's what happened after two thousand and eight, once the stimulus money went away. Um, you know, so it's, we need to expect that. Hopefully not, but I'd rather be prepared to cut a million and a half and not have to than need to and not know what we're doing.
So my question for you ladies is how would you like me to present this tomorrow? Are you looking for some presentation or just, you know, um, staffing reallocation? What our budget is, how much we went down, what are we allocating and the, and the, and the steps we're using? Is that what we're looking for, for tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think just the facts.
Okay, just the facts, ma'am.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Did we?
Presentation or anything, right?
No.
Okay.
Did we want to talk in this meeting about the two principals or the, excuse me, two administrators at Green Meadow?
Yeah.
Cause we had that meeting.
We either talk about it now or we talk about it tomorrow night.
Let's talk about it now, so.
Yeah, right.
So essentially, uh, Mary Jane, Irene, um, Brian and myself, we met last week. Um, and Charles, were you in that meeting too? I can't remember. Charles?
Yeah.
You may have been. Um, yeah, it's two meetings. And tossed around every idea under the sun, um, in order to try and come up with a second administrative position. Um, we had mentioned that we ha, we are seeing a point five increase in guidance support at Green Meadow. Could we turn that into a dean of students type position? Um, I spoke with the individual who, um, would have that role. Um, she is interested in supporting teachers and students through challenging times, but brings up a good point in terms of, you know, being the person in the office who's responding directly to behavioral challenges, that that may not work within her schedule and so on. Um, so I think it's worth exploring how that person can support, um, challenging relationships, um, between adults and kids, uh, but not necessarily as the disciplinarian or dean of students in that capacity. Um, I did also speak with our math coach, um, or she's an instructional coach, excuse me, I spoke with her as well, um, about potentially having a more evaluative or administrative role.
Terry Morrison?
Terry Morrison, yeah. Um, and she's intrigued. Um, she is looking at licensure requirements and, and I told her I would work with Charles on that in terms of what we would need. And I think some of that depends on what the role is called. Um, you know, but it essentially, it would ha, it would mean moving her out of the union unless we could get some other agreement, um, that she would be able to do some evaluations in that capacity. Um, so it's not as clean as just simply, you know, shifting that position in. Obviously, my office can move down to Green Meadow. That's not a problem in any capacity and happy to be an extra set of hands if, if, um, things happen that we need to do. Um, we did anticipate having additional preschool revenue. I think I mentioned last week that that is not looking like it's coming through in any, in any way. Um, we did anticipate using the thirty-nine thousand dollars from the Student Opportunity Act. Um, I'm guessing, and Mary Jane and I have had this conversation, Irene, I don't know what your thoughts are, that we're not going to see that?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much the word on the street.
Um, you know, so.
I'm gonna see what?
The Student Opportunity Act funding, the thirty-nine thousand.
Oh.
Um.
Well, that change has.
Yeah, cause the state budget has been shut to hell just like the town budget has.
And I think that's pretty real. I, I don't think that they are going to, you know, I think they'll prior, prioritize other things other than our thirty-nine thousand dollars is my guess. Um, you know, so I, I, they're going through that piece, but I wouldn't plan on that revenue. So really what we have is the thirty thousand dollars in, um, professional development or literacy support that we had allocated. Um, so sorry to be the bearer of bad news, but it doesn't, we're, we're not finding an avenue there. Um, that was where we were looking at the custodial positions to see if that would be an avenue. Um, we do have an email out to, um, Rob.
Rulo.
Rulo, thank you. I wanted to say Marlo.
Have we talked with him yet?
Uh, even email out, we have not had a conversation yet, uh, but we will do that just to see what his, um, particular experience is in. Um, I will also be reaching out to some of our professional development providers, um, from Leslie University, from, uh, Wilson, from other, other places, um, to see what that thirty thousand dollars could, could get us in terms of that capacity. Um, you know, to provide that literacy support. Um, but in terms of the idea of having like a director of early literacy, um, director of early learning, um, we're not sure that, that, that there's an option to do that currently. Sorry.
Okay, so, but what I'm hearing is that you guys are still planning to have a second, hire a second principal for GM?
No.
Oh, no.
Money.
No, no.
Okay, alright, so that, okay, so that's why you would move down to Green Meadow?
Right, but we also then need to, in terms of addressing our Student Opportunity Act feedback, uh, the survey that we had, you know, it, there needs to be some additional support around, um, literacy. You know, there's concern around the literacy programming, um, early learning literacy. And then there was concern around implementation of high-quality curriculum within all classroom spaces. Those were the two most important, um, with it, or most seen as a need between the staff and the parent community.
But if we're not getting that money, then we don't need to fulfill that right now, do we?
No, but I think that if the need has been identified, you know, to me, that would be what, no, we don't have any state obligation to, to, to do that. Um, but if that is, and it was overwhelmingly the need that was identified in terms of perception of how we need to move our district forward, I think we need to figure out how we're going to address that. Um.
But anyway.
I, in some capacity. Um, and so talking with Rob is a component of that, but then also looking at other professional development opportunities. Um, I worry more about the, um, implementation of high-quality curriculum. Um, because that is, you know, that's observation, that's dialogue, that's all of those, you know, coaching pieces through administrators and other people. And there's ways of doing that differently. It's just, we're not finding a clean way of adding it as a second administrator within the building, which is also a message we have gotten, I think loud and clear from our community and our teachers as well, which is, um, we would prefer to have two administrators in every building.
Okay. Um, the other thing I have a question about is if we aren't going to have a second administrator, um, to deal with disciplinary and behavioral issues, um, does it really make sense to cut six paras?
So the reduction in paraprofessionals is as a result of meeting those needs differently. We're going to be meeting those needs through co-taught classrooms.
Right.
Um, so they, you know, the, the service is still being provided. We're not reducing the service that we're providing. We're just providing that service differently.
Right.
And I think, you know, the other piece of this is just how we think about, you know, solving our, our challenges, whether it's behavioral, academic challenges, um, and understanding that, you know, yes, having an individual who's free and available to support an individual student, um, is, is one strategy. However, I think if we look at our goal of, you know, owning all of our students and, and all means all within our community, our educational community, it, that can't always be our answer, which is, I'm going to give this person an individual. It has to be, we work on our system, um, in order to meet those kids' needs. That makes sense.
So what additional support can we give our teachers? Because I know the, and you all know my experience from second grade with Maya, what happened and we had to take her out of school. Um, when there are, because it seems like second and third grade is when they really start to escalate if there are going to be issues that haven't been identified yet.
Yeah.
What can we do to support the teachers who are in classrooms with those students who haven't yet been identified? And we don't have the means to support them?
Well, I didn't, I think it might not even be who haven't yet been identified. I think it may be that we have students who aren't meeting our expectations and we're not able to find a solution as to how to help them do that, regardless of disability. Um, and what we are looking at, when I spoke with, uh, Julie Danforth, who's going to be the guidance counselor down there, providing some coaching, you know, Anne Rutherford absolutely adopted and ran with collaborative and proactive solutions, um, which is, I think, a huge component that we're missing, um, right now. I think the PBIS team has done an amazing amount of work to really change the tone and the tenor of that building, um, just in terms of, of setting clear behavioral expectations for students and, and really shoring up that tier-one behavioral instruction.
Did they get their second year of training?
Yep, yep, they did two years of training. The third year of training was a, um, more of a cohort model and they elected not to attend and rather use the time internally. Um, I can't, I didn't hear, sorry.
No.
Oh, she's muted, okay. Um, so, but what I, what we talked, the, the issue with having Anne own the collaborative and proactive solutions was that it wasn't being implemented in the way that it needs to be, which is with the individual teacher and the student and forming that relationship. So that was the conversation I had with Julie about how she could support, you know, facilitating those conversations and training our teachers and supporting our teachers in that way. Um, because we'll have additional time down there in terms of guidance staff, she and Anne can, can work in that capacity. Um, in terms of the academic component of, of addressing all of our students and owning all of our students, that's where the, the coaching comes in. And I, again, I want to, I want us to think more broadly about coaching than just, we have a coach like Terry Morrison or Denise Hatch was or other people, but that it is a person who has an expertise that helps me get better at what I need to do, um, which could be an administrator as well. Um, that is the, you know, the model of continuous improvement, you know, using data that we are going to have to use next year um, because of all of the gaps that are going to be all over the place. Um, you know, one of the things that I've, I've said privately in the last couple of weeks and, and said to our administrators, um, and I think we need to begin to say publicly, is I am incredibly proud of what our staff have done over the last two weeks, three weeks, um, to get the remote learning plans up and running, the way that they have acknowledged the, um, you know, the hierarchy of needs within, within our students. Um, and I was surprised by the level of commitment that, uh, that's not the right word. I was surprised by the ease with which they, you know, entered into this fight, this challenge, um, took it on and, and ran with it. Um, a lot of the conversations that we used to have in regards to, you know, this, this is too difficult or this is challenging and, and then the conversations stop there. They're not stopping. Our staff are running through this and, and doing their absolute best. And so I have great hope that as we reimagine education for next year, for whatever that looks like, um, that that sentiment and mentality is going to carry through. Um, and, and again, we're not going to have a choice because we're going to have kids all over the place. It really will be every kid who's going to be in a different place. Um, and, you know, I, I do feel that they're up, they're up to the task, they're up to the challenge and they're, they're jumping in with both feet and I couldn't be more proud for them.
What sort of, um, I don't know, motivation activities or information or materials can we come up with over the summer to keep that momentum and that motivation and enthusiasm going?
Yeah, I, um, I think we got to find out what the commissioner says on Friday for what that recommendation will be.
MJ.
What?
Why are you laughing?
Cause nobody knows.
Um, and, and honestly, I think it's going to have to keep going forward because we're going to need to work with our teachers and the association on whatever the plan's going to be. Um, you know, what, what Commissioner Riley said this morning, um, and at the press conference, I believe, in terms of, you know, temperature checks and shit, you know, alternating shifts and, and types of things. We're going to have to continue to work with our team. Um, so I think again, it's, it, we're not going to have a choice in terms of keeping that moving forward. Um, I also think that a lot of the money that we have allocated for curriculum work over the summer um, is really going to be putting processes in place so that we can hit the ground running in the fall with whatever, whatever we have. So we will.
I guess I was saying, what can we, like the school committee do to keep the motivation going and, or, you know, whether it's sending emails and pep talks or, you know, that sort of thing, thanking them?
Yep.
Okay.
I think all of those are good pieces. You know, I've gotten several positive emails from community members and, you, you know, our teachers, as I said, they're running through this, this challenge. Um, they're also getting their feet knocked out from under them. Um, you know, ninety-nine percent of our communications are very positive. When you get that one that's not, you know, it can really knock your feet out. And so, yes, absolutely sending them messages of support. Um, you know, the good things that are happening that you're hearing within the community, um, those can absolutely help, um, to shore up when we do get those messages that aren't so positive.
There's also a lot of misinformation going around too, that I don't know how we can counter.
Well, there's just differences between teachers and how they're, how they're performing too. They're not, it's not necessary that one's worse or worse or better. They just do it differently, which is.
Yeah. Well, and then even just comparing from district to district, like the whole online stuff and people having video classrooms and whatnot. I spoke with a, a mom from Stowe and she said that they're shying away from the video conferencing because of what happened at Nishoba with the teacher and the student.
Right, right.
So it isn't across the board. It isn't that everyone's doing this stuff and we aren't. And I don't know how to get that information out to people so they can just stop comparing us.
I think what I would say is, and we talked about this as a, as a admin team. Um, you know, when we get those concerns, whether it be from a teacher or given to a teacher or to an administrator, we're asking the question of, you know, what is, what is the root cause of, of the concern? Um, you know, is it that your child is missing a connection with the individ, you know, how, how can we come up with a situation um, that will meet the need that you're identifying for your child and meet the needs of our teachers for them to be able to perform their jobs, um, you know, professionally and appropriately in ways that make them feel comfortable? Um, so that's, I think, what we're doing is that, you know, we need to work with our families um, and our families need to, to connect with the teachers through office hours, connect with administrators. Um, and I think the other message is that we are going to continually, continuously improve our remote learning plans. We already made a change, um, in regards to the specials at Green Meadow and Fowler, based on feedback that we received from families. We're implementing that this week. We're sending out a survey to our teachers, um, in the next day or so. We'll be sending out a formal survey to all members of the Maynard School community on, on Friday to get some data. And we will continue to, to act on that. Um, you know, there are things that we're not going to act on. Um, I will tell you that video synchronous whole-class video instruction, um, is, I don't think anything that I would ever support for any, for a whole host of reasons that we can have another office hour about. Um, you know, are there things that we could do differently to get some of what families are, are looking for? Yeah, and we will look at ways we can do that.
Can I say something? Um, we've had this discussion with teachers and, um, as Jennifer said, the, the comments have been overwhelmingly positive, but it's that once in a while negative comment that really can bother people. And we've had the discussion with teachers about trying to ignore what is seen on Facebook and other social media. And I keep getting response, well, it's easier said than done.
Sure is.
Just have to ignore it. So what, what people can do is just positive messages, um, to people. And, um, yes, at times it might be necessary to say something, but it should, any kind of criticism shouldn't be, um, given through Facebook or other social media. That's, that's not the avenue. So it's an ongoing thing, but I, I, I know it seems for us to say, it's, it's, I've been in a situation myself. I ha, I don't particularly like criticism, whether it's true or not true. Um, but, um, you know, there's, there comes a point where people, um, nee, need to, um, to realize that, uh, uh, just, some of it just has to be ignored.
There are people who enjoy criticizing others. They kind of.
A couple of brutal things that have been on there. You just, you just have to ignore it.
Just a quick note, by the way, when someone said about comparing districts, um, there was an article, I think this morning or late yesterday, about another town that had been doing the parades, you know, that we talked about. They had to stop doing them because the people, the, the, the audience was not behaving. The people were not social distancing. So just.
I received many emails from people thanking us for canceling the parade because they were really concerned. So I think we made the right call there.
Yeah, it was the timing. The time, the timing wasn't the greatest, right?
Yeah, yeah. But I think that if we can do it at some point in the future, we should, but with a little more preparation.
Yeah, well, we've got to do the conversations about graduation and all the things involved with that, which is, which is not an easy, not easy decisions.
And can I just ask about that Green Meadow?
And can I just ask about that Green Meadow, that secondary administrative position? Is that off the table, or is that under discussion, and we need to sort of feel out Rob and see what his comfort level with being the only administrator at that building is? And sort of most importantly, what does that building need in terms of the staff and the students to be successful? Because that seems like, that's what it comes down to in some ways, and I understand the the finances behind it, but what does the building need to make sure it's successful?
Right.
And I don't know the answer to that. I just figure that's worth some discussion.
One of the first things they need is they need a principal who has their back. I don't think that they have felt supported in the past by their building admin. I think they felt like.
Lydia, you're cutting out. I couldn't hear you.
She's on mute.
I think you're mic'd. No, she's not muted. Her computer must have the same bug that mine had last week.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Anyway, I just think, I think that they need, they need to feel connection with their building principal.
They also, they do need, they need the second administrator, though, because there are very strong personalities down there that have been there for a very long time that have seen numerous principals come and go. And it's sort of, you know, what's the latest genre that we're going through, you know, because every principal brings a different personality and different way of doing things. So we do need to figure out a way to have that second person be in there. I'm wondering, we, and this isn't great either, at one point, we had Mike Barth down there for a little bit. I'm wondering if we could, have we looked into sharing from different buildings to bring a person part-time, and maybe somebody in the middle school can step up and allow Mike to come down to Green Meadow to help you, Jen, if you're down there as a second person? I'm sure that's probably been looked at, too, right?
It was actually Donna Dangder was the person who split between the two in the first year where we implemented the CIA and LNO model.
On, so I'm just wondering if there's a way, have we looked at incorporating?
Right.
Yeah. Talked about, we did talk a little bit about that.
No, it's not ideal. But I know they loved Mike, too, being down there for the short time that he was, so.
I don't think Mike was ever down there.
I thought he was down there. Wasn't he down there last year at some point?
No, I think Dan has gone down a little bit. Kevin, no, Kevin has not gone down. Charles, they love him when Charles is there.
I know they love Charles down there.
Everybody loves.
Everybody loves Charles.
They don't want to work that hard.
I mean, I think part of the conversation was to perhaps, you know, maybe use that guidance counselor as for socio-emotional support for the students, and that may alleviate some of that, you know, disciplinary need. And I think having that person down there, I think that's what our initial thought was, right, Jennifer?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, and and speaking with Julie, who would be in that position, again, I think her support can be more in the coaching and in the, you know, helping to to do some support with either collaborative and proactive solutions or just in in healing relationships between students and staff, when that gets out of whack. I think a direct disciplinary role would, she would feel would be very challenging in order for her to continue the good, the amazing work that she's doing, going into classrooms and supporting that tier one space. So really, what we'd be looking for for her, the way I sort of framed it to her is that, okay, now, now we would be taking some of your time to support some of that tier two type stuff, right? So we're doing some basic classroom. I think Terry Morrison, being able to do some observation, feedback, coaching in some different ways, I think is important to consider because that can help with, again, some of that coaching of helping us to own all of our students, particularly through data, using data to inform instruction. That is an incredible skill set of hers. So that can be helpful. I can be helpful in that area. I think really the the piece that we need to talk about with Rob is, you know, instructionally in terms of the early literacy and and what we do there. You know, Brian, to answer your question, what does that building need? I think if you were to poll the teachers and the parents, it would be, we need two, we need two administrators in that building for a sense of security and comfort because it was too crazy when we didn't have that, especially with a new person coming in. You know, I I think the question then becomes, where do we find the funding in order to do that, if that is what we're saying our priority is? We do have thirty thousand dollars in regards to that professional development that we had set aside for early literacy. I don't know where there is additional funding to cover the rest of the sixty, seventy grand we would need. Lydia?
What if we didn't make Kevin Crusoe full-time?
It would save you about ten grand.
Yeah.
Right, right, yeah.
Because what we're.
And that is.
But the additional stipend is it is another twelve thousand, right?
No, that's the only, that's all we're paying. So when we put that position in the budget, we only put in the twelve thousand, ten grand, twelve thousand dollars, because he believes he can get someone to do it for that. We did not have it as a separate position.
So he's not getting a raise in pay?
No. Well, I mean, I, I shouldn't say it that way. You know, raises in terms of performance-based, that happens, you know, with Mary Jane in her office and that type of thing. But in terms of, you know, he's going from a point five to a one-point-oh type doubling of his pay, no, that's not happening. If we were not able to find someone to do that role, or we had to use a teacher piece and we had to reduce their workload because that's in the contract in order for them to take the stipend, that's where you're getting the thirty thousand dollars, but that's not what we think is happening.
Right.
So.
And if you do an opportunity act, that would have given us, you know, thirty-nine, which would have been, help us. And that's not the case now, so.
We, I don't think we've exhausted every kind of possibility. I think we can continue to talk about that. While we've been discussing, some other ideas have cropped into my head. So there, there, there are lots of models that are out there on the.
Either way, I'm not changing the budget we have moving forward. We just have to work within that.
Within the, within the current budget, right.
Okay.
We can work within that.
Okay. I'm not changing it.
No.
So that said, I, I think you're right. We can try to be a little more creative. Let's see what we get for candidates for some of those retirements. I mean, the money, I know that, that.
Right, and we hadn't planned for Nancy's retirement, the eighth grade retirement.
Right, we didn't have that in there. And I'm not sure we had the kindergarten retirement either, so.
Uh, I really.
We were hoping for that.
I do not have Michelle's notes from what she did, so I don't know what was built into the budget. I only know what the budget is that was proposed.
I don't think she did build in the kindergarten retirement.
I feel like we did. I, we had a conversation, because we were anticipating.
We can find, we can find that out, yeah.
She may not have done the grade eight. That is true.
No, because we didn't know that until.
Right. So I mean, there might be a little bit here and there that we could squeak it out a little bit, you know, based on what we get for, for candidates for some of the other positions. So I mean, again, if if somebody, we put in for sixty-six and we get somebody for sixty, I mean, I don't know. So, you know.
Yeah.
No. The same thing with Carol's position.
Right. Is that public now?
It is public, yes.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Well, I'm telling you now, I asked her last night, yes, we can go ahead, and I will, I have Jennifer in charge of, who do I have you in charge of, Jennifer? Business manager. And I have Charles in charge of the special ed director.
Student sports.
So we didn't post for special ed director yet, but we will, we already posted for the business manager, and that should be closing in the next few days, and then we'll start moving forward with that.
Are we involving CPAC and?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Have to, have to, yeah.
Absolutely. Last time, I did the last time, and we had four CPAC members as part of the team.
Okay. Do, are you allowed to say the six people who are retiring?
Yeah, I think so.
I don't know if I have them right in front of me.
Well, we've got Trish Demas.
Yeah.
Got the Nancy Griffin. We have, who else did I have?
Kindergarten teacher.
Mary Beth Wallace, Jeannie Einichuk, Pam, blinking her name, Pam at the high school.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Patty?
Pam Carter, yep.
Okay.
How many is that?
I have, yeah, pupil personnel director, eighth grade science, Jeannie, high school, PE, and kindergarten. That's six, yeah.
Everybody. I don't know, I don't have all their names in front of me, but I just have the, the position.
So, so you don't know the kindergarten teacher that's retiring?
Yeah.
Mary Beth Wallace.
Yeah, that's Mary Beth, okay.
Yeah, I just had the positions. I didn't put their names here.
Yeah, that's all right. Yeah.
Okay. I mean, so there might, you know, I don't know, but I mean, we can, once we get everything sorted out, I think we can probably take a look at it and, I don't know.
Got a little bit more money.
And, you know, I never, I've never known a summer when somebody didn't retire over the summer, too.
Okay.
You know, oh, you know, no one ever thinks so, but just about every summer I've ever worked, there's been some of those, something's come up.
I'll retire over the summer.
No, you're not going anywhere.
I can't, Mary. Reggie won't let me. He says twelve percent is not good enough.
Four more years. I have four more years if you want to start planning.
Oh, there we go.
Only four.
Denise.
Oh, that's same as I do. Four more years for me, too.
We'll have a big party, Charles. Okay, so it looks like that's what we have. So I'll put those things together for tomorrow and.
Very informal, because that's what we've got.
I have a couple of things.
Okay.
One, at the board's selectman meeting last week, they were very against funding a load-bearing study. So we are going to need to come up with a Plan B in terms of that.
Okay.
How we're going to address that. And I guess we can discuss that more tomorrow night at our meeting.
What were they in favor of?
They're in favor of funding three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to just do the pre-K side of the building, and that's it.
And to do that in the spring or in the fall?
They would like to do that ASAP. So what we would, and and they're talking about, you know, maybe not occupying the kindergarten and pre-K wing until October, or, I know. So that's the thing, is I need to know what the variables are, because there's another meeting tonight, and I need to report back to them what, like, how can, what our options are, or what we are willing to tolerate.
We, I, so in terms of not occupying that entire wing, you are, we need, would need to find five or six classroom spaces, I believe, which, off the top of my head, we might have one or two. Otherwise, we are looking at, oh, God, I can't even imagine. I mean, okay, so nuclear option, right, is we do what we had initially thought of, which is move the eighth grade up to the high school and move the fourth grade, the third grade up to Fowler. I can guarantee you, people are going to lose their minds.
We don't have time to do that.
Well, but also, people are going to lose their minds if we say we're going to do that now.
Can't do that. There's no way.
There's no way.
I don't see any way that we can shut down that entire wing completely.
I think all we have now, honestly, not the whole wing, just the preschool.
So if, but if, if they were to go ahead with the preschool work this summer and they couldn't get done in time, they wouldn't be able to do the work when the kids were in school, correct? They would have to do it on weekends or evenings?
No, they can do it. We have set, we have set an expectation that no work happens when students are in buildings, but that does not have to be the expectation.
Okay, so that is an option.
I don't know, I don't know construction-wise if it is. You know, I don't know what access they would need to have, because we're talking about the interior wing.
Right.
They could only access via cranes and or.
Right.
You know, so I, that would be a Justin question, whether that's even feasibly possible.
And also noise level. I worked in a building during construction, and that was with high schoolers.
Right. Well, that was the other thing I was going to say, there's.
Do that with these kids.
Right.
At my last district, they, they did a, they did a three to, I don't know what they did, maybe three to H. I can't remember the shift they did, but we have, you know, we have Excel at the end of the afternoon, so that became the issue. When I said high school, they did, two o'clock, they came in, two o'clock, and they worked till, and then they worked Saturdays. And that's, but that costs more money because they have to pay the people on the weekends. So, so that also becomes an issue if you work.
Right, and yeah, and Justin did bring that up.
I don't see any possible way we can close down that whole wing. I think whether or not they can do it nights and weekends, you know, again, are we allowed to do construction when kids are in the building? Yes. Are there downfalls to doing it? Absolutely.
So should I tell them, then, that we, we could just not occupy the pre-K side of the wing, but we don't want the construction to start until next year?
I mean, they can do the nights and weekends. We're just going to wind up paying more.
Right, right.
I mean, I think you can do it. If you can get somebody to go, do it. I, I, I think you, if you can get it, great.
Is there, was there any conversation, Lydia, though, about having to do the kindergarten side at some point before we finish the building project?
They didn't even want to discuss it.
Okay, because that is something that I think folks need to, according to the CBI study, that side will need to be done prior to us opening whatever the new project is.
Yeah, I know. I, I think that they, they felt like they could only justify funding three hundred and fifty, and if that was all they could fund, then they were going to do the side that, that was more problematic.
Yeah, I, I hear that. I just, I, I think it's important to keep in mind that we might need to go back.
Yes, and I will, I will raise that tonight.
I mean, the other option, I suppose, is that we, you know, we had said we wanted to slow down on the school building project. We could accelerate that. And then maybe it would only be, you know, a couple of years that we would have needed to replace the kindergarten side of the roof and not have done so. But that's not a guarantee either.
They are also shying away from funding the feasibility study.
What?
They are shying away.
Lydia, we lost your connection again.
That'll be a problem with the MSBA, however.
No kidding.
Well, we have, Brian, we haven't voted on the feasibility study, so we don't have authorization to do it. I just, I don't, I don't know, and maybe Lydia has an answer to this. I don't know if they're shying away from funding it via overrides, which is what had been proposed, or if they don't want to fund it at all.
Um, there, Greg is looking at all the options, but right now, because our, our water and sewer infrastructure is so problematic with everyone at home, we've got wells running twenty-four seven, and it is, we are in jeopardy of losing one of our wells, and we need to bring another one online, and it's going to cost millions of dollars. And that, right now, is the focus. We were supposed to raise water and sewer prices a certain amount to help cover the funding to, to get the work done that we needed to get done, and they didn't even want to raise the prices to do that. So they, they're raising them a little bit, but it's not going to cover the cost of, of the work that needs to be done. And so right now, they're gun-shy about pretty much any new debt being taken on.
So what is the plan for that building?
Green Meadow? I don't even think they're thinking that far out.
Okay, so I would go back in terms of, sorry to interrupt, but I would go back, you know, in terms of bringing this forward. We are looking at, I think we still have two or three years left, that all of the investments that go into that building in terms of repairs and things of that nature are going to be hit, going towards that threshold, meaning we could be looking at doing significant renovations of that building to bring it up to ADA compliance.
Right, okay, yeah.
And so we can't lose sight of that piece either. I think, you know, could we limp along to when the six hundred thousand dollars goes off of the book, so to speak, in terms of that threshold? And then maybe do some major renovations, sure, but we're going, those renovations are going to be ten to fifteen million dollars. So, which is about the cost of, of what we could be paying, you know, in terms of the, and we're going to have to do a feasibility study in order to do that as well. So I, I get that there are competing. So I I get that there are competing priorities. But this is one of those moments where we have to have all of the projects. Aligned together and not just say we're not going to pay attention to one because it's going to stop working.
So Lydia, they're not interested in doing the school over? Is that what you're saying at all?
No, it's it's that they're they're really. Right now, they are. They're feeling the sting of the loss revenue from from, you know, the shutdowns and everything and. And then the additional issues of the water and sewage which weren't foreseen. And so priorities have shifted. Water and sewage we knew needed to be done, but now it's really been pushed forward. Because we're all at home and using so much more water than we usually do during the day when everyone's away and at work. And so they, I mean, they're being very conscientious about the fact that people are out of work. And may not even be able to pay their mortgages or their rents, let alone a price increase in water and sewage. Or even want to take on debt and one of the Board of Selectmen felt that it was absolutely unconscionable for us to even introduce. Additional costs to Maynard citizens in the midst of this crisis. So.
Talking about no fire station, then I take it.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So do I not move forward? Because we have to have, we have things that are due for the feasibility study June 1st.
Right, and I will. I will try to. What sort of things need to be done? Are any of them dependent upon money from the Board of Selectmen?
No.
No. More than I I would say we should go ahead with the paperwork and.
Right, okay.
I agree. And I think ultimately they may just leave it up to the town to decide, which is what I think they should do. And not just not put it on the ballot, but I I think they are. Greg Johnson went through and listed all of the items that were going to be included. On the warrant. No, I have it. I have it in a different piece of paper. Um, anyway, so. I think they are continuing that discussion tonight. Regarding what to keep on the warrant and what not to keep on the warrant and whether to do it this spring or in the fall. So I will. You know, report to them where we are in terms of Green Meadow and what needs to be done and remind them of the trigger point. So I I don't know. Yeah. Feasibility study, they may go for. No, seriously, I mean, I just I they're they. There are too many.
Going to work as far as, you know, I I. I don't know if we can push it out anymore. I mean, I and I and I get all of that. I absolutely positively get it. I mean, the times are different. You think I I, yeah, I don't know.
I think now more than ever, this is a time for Bob Bob McCarthy's, you know, plea over the last 15 years.
Right.
For us to work together to come up with what we need for all of Maynard and instead of planning individual projects. That we look at all of the pieces of the puzzle and now is not the time for the Board of Selectmen to withdraw and isolate and. And if they're going to do that, and you don't have to say this to them, Lydia. If they're going to do that. If they're going to do that, then I think they need to be the ones who are going to step up to the plate and tell our community members which services we will not be providing anymore. Which will cost our community members money for them to provide them for themselves. You know, so which we didn't want to talk about when we had the tri board meeting, right? We didn't want to talk about. Regionalizing schools or police or fire or any of these things because it would be more expensive for the community members to do it themselves. If they are not going to be willing to do some of these things, which increases, you know, our ability to to fund these projects. Then they have to be the ones to come to the table to say this is the level of service, police, fire, schools that we will support. Which they have not been willing to do in the past.
Right. No, I agree. I agree. Oh, yeah, no, 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 no. I I I agree. I just I want to make sure that I am. Firm in the knowledge of what we can and cannot do so that I can tell them because they're floundering also. You know.
Well, I think, you know, Mary Jane, myself, Charles, Brian as well, Irene, we are happy to work with Greg and the town. To come up with a plan that we can present to the three boards so that we could again have one message. If there is an appetite for that, you know, I think trusting the people that you hire in some capacity, this might be the moment to do that.
Yeah, we do have a tri board budget subcommittee meeting this week. And I can send invitations to any of you if you, well, not other school committee members, but Jen or MJ. Brian, I think I sent it to you already, but if you're interested, Irene, are you included in those emails?
I don't think I've seen it, so put me on there.
Yeah, it's Thursday night.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I'll I'll forward it to you guys so that you have the link at least if you want to. Come and chime in or just listen to the discussion because the discussion is completely different now than it was two months ago.
Yeah.
Yes, send the link.
Okay. So I think. Yeah, that was what I had. And I have another question, but it's not budget related and I can, I'll just send MJ an email separately. I don't want to hold people up.
Okay, so that's it. We'll see you all tomorrow night unless somebody has something else. No.
Mary Jane and Brian and Charles, can you stay on the line after?
Sure.
I just heard back from Rob.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, see y'all later.
Guys, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Bye.